Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular January 14th meeting. Please join me for the play. Thank you. As you said, the online, right? Good evening, Cynthia. All right. I know we have some people in the public in the audience today. I know there's some presentations. Anybody like to speak during public session? No? Is he doing okay, Bob, or no? You think he's all right? All right. Any correspondence, Mary?
No.
No? Okay. All right. The next thing is elections of officers. Each year we do a chair and a vice chair, so I accept any motions.
I'd make a motion that we elect Nick Ellis as chairman for the twenty five, twenty six, or twenty five season, sorry.
Is there any other, any other, well, we close nominations. All in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Vice Chair, accept a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Cynthia McCorkendale as vice chair for the upcoming season.
Is there any other?
It's.
Motion?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you for a second. Any other motions on that?
Those motions be closed?
Okay. Second, you have your second for your motion?
Well.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right. All in favor on Cynthia being vice chair? Singing a saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. We'll continue. Thank you, everybody. Consideration, again, Mary's got everything here, consideration to approve from December tenth meeting. That was a regular meeting on December tenth. Everybody have a minute to read those?
We can make a motion that we approve our December tenth, twenty twenty four's meeting minutes?
Do we have a second?
I'll second your motion.
Any other discussion on the minutes from December tenth? That's right, everybody's mind, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody was in?
Cynthia, you were absent from that one.
I was? Wait.
Number ten.
You're probably.
I apologize. Yes, you're right. You're correct. Sorry.
We want to extend and the rest is, we had a special meeting up in the Board of Ed, January second. It was a joint meeting, special meeting. Someone like to make a motion for that?
Motion that we accept the minutes as written for January second.
You have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Everybody's mind, all in favor?
I agree.
Bobby. Yeah, everyone else was here. Thank you on that. All right, the first thing is the elderly and disabled tax relief program. Actually, John, Paul, and Bob would like to go first.
Um, I'm gonna hand it off to these guys since they can set it off.
Cynthia, I apologize. We, we actually made an exhibit here which we didn't get to use, but we'll make it available. For those who haven't been introduced before, this is a rather intimidating little pile of papers here. The good news is at the end, we're not going to ask you to do anything other than bring this to you for information purposes. Each year, the state of Connecticut, Department of the Office of Policy and Management develops income limits for the state benefit programs that we're talking about tonight, the homeowners program. The income limits that they develop and then publish get applied to the homeowners program, which is the biggest program and the one that's most immediate because it starts two and a half weeks. They also apply to the state rental rebate program and to some degree to the veterans program, the state portion of veteran program. As you know, there are two portions, a vessel portion of the veterans program and a state portion. So the income limits are identical through all the programs. What I did was the first sheet that you see is the programs as they will, are the limits that were published by the Office of OPEA. So that comes out. Every town in the state uses those income limits for the state portions of these programs. To give you some perspective on how that looks versus the past, if you turn back past that first page, there's a sheet that shows you the income brackets that have been in effect since grand list year two thousand and seven, up to and including the new ones that will be going into effect. As you can see, the top bracket this year is going from fifty three, four, which was the top bracket last year, to a total of fifty five, one. And I just put it as a reference what the increase has been at these levels since two thousand and, when, uh, two thousand and nine. At the bottom, in order to put some perspective around why the state changes these levels, there is something that captures what the social security poll, I think what motivates the state that raised the levels on these programs. Following that, I have four sheets that show kind of the historic, what we in Bethel have had in terms of participation in the program and the dollar amount and the percentage and percentage of applicants and percent of dollars. So if you ever have interest in looking at what the levels have been over the past couple of years, that's detailed in there. The final sheet is the sheet, which is the chapter ninety eight. And that, as currently shows, shows last year's income limits. Two years ago, we did away with our top bracket because it would require an adjustment because at that point, the state bracket five or their highest brackets would have exceeded what was our historic upper bracket. So we did away with that and we went with the state numbers using their upper limits as our program limits each year. So following this meeting, what will happen is the sheets on the back of that that show the brackets will be updated to show this year's state brackets. So we follow the state guidelines. We use the upper level for each of the brackets as opposed to the married, unmarried, married in single brackets, the state has. But the, uh, that program will reflect the income limits that are shown on page one, which are the state levels that have been dictated. And again, no action required on your part because we're following the state guidelines on that, not guidelines, state numbers. But if you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but to keep the seniors in their houses, I think are a big benefit. With realizing that anytime we take money, a smart guy said this to me a long time ago, pay attention here, Bob. Anytime you take a dollar off of someone's back, you're putting it on someone else's back. But I think this is, if you remember that, Bobby, remember that? Were you yelling at me at that point or?
Never.
But again, I, 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 I think it's a great program and I appreciate your time that everybody puts in it. Anybody else?
No, I'd just like to echo your comments. I think that, you know, that the senior in our town need a tool to be able to afford to live in the town and hopefully someday they die in the town that they raise their family.
So there's no action for you guys because you're following the state? Is that considered? Or is that right, Brad? Excellent. We thank you for the information and thanks for coming out.
John, thank you for doing what you do for our seniors.
Thank you. All right.
Paul, I saw you had a speaking part, but I guess you.
Yeah, it's just a moral support. Came to wish you happy birthday, John. That's all it was. That's all it was.
The kids did okay.
Paul, you remember, vanilla cake.
All right. This is the one I've been waiting for. Rachel's, Rachel, just, don't get behind the chair. Get in front of the chair. There's an ask from the Park and Rec Commission and obviously Rachel's here to speak about it, so.
So before Rachel goes into it, in your packet is the CNR update.
CNR, right.
There's a one small change on what you have in your packet, the third item down, fourth item down. Board of Ed's charity upgrades. I talked to Jim today and that thirty thousand nine twenty three fifty, that project's done. So that thirty thousand nine twenty three is going to go back into the unallocated balance. So the updated unallocated balance before anything tonight is now two million seven fifty five. So ironically, it went up thirty thousand dollars.
Really?
Ironically.
Thank you, Rachel. I mean, that was nice.
Yeah.
Found money, right? All right, Rachel, please go right ahead.
So this is an ask, right before I took my commission, the turf open and part of that project was, I believe our department was allotted X amount of money to purchase a tractor, or UTV, ATV, or side by side, whatever Nick called it, which I didn't understand what he was talking about.
No one ever does.
So for some reason, we purchased one from Tractor Supply for six thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars. Not sure it was the best purchase. Since the past spring, we've had a lot of issues, whether it's shifting forward and reverse, engine issues, a lot, the parts are off brand. They're not parts that are typically made and easily accessible to, to order. Relays and wire boxes are, don't work well in the machine. Since the spring, I would say whether it was our guys figuring out how to get it to go in reverse or forward, or our a mechanic that helps us out occasionally, Andy Matura or Troy, it was like a weekly, if not bi-weekly fix on this machine. And it just didn't, it wasn't serving a good purpose for us. So looking at getting a, obviously much more expensive machine, but I think a machine that is going to be a lot more use, usable for what we're looking to do and will have a lot more options moving forward. We are getting the base package, which I mean, I know thirty thousand dollars can seem like a base package. But you know, we're getting the, like, all, everything's extra, getting a canopy, getting doors, getting working lights. We are getting an electric bed lift, which the current one didn't have. It was a hand crane. And you know, when you're moving clay and you have to hand crank it, I mean, I know, you know, our guys are hard workers, but it takes a lot out of you. But this machine will also have an option down the line if we want to, to add a salt sprayer for winter. We could add a plow for winter. Those are all, this, this machine has a lot more options. Our guys use it to groom the turf. Our guys use it to transport clay, sand, salt, depending on the season. They're not currently using the machine now for this purpose. We, our part timers use it during spring, summer, fall, when, when we have a bunch of part timers to get from our shop into the school system. We use it to get machinery, our chainsaws and things to clear out the disc golf area, the walking trail behind the schools. Just because it's more movable, it's, it's smaller. So I, I think it would be a huge asset to our department and an asset that wouldn't be a constant issue every week.
Rachel, can I jump in for a minute?
Absolutely.
What she's talking about is dragging a machine around to groom the, the artificial field. That's the primary use. There was a seventy five hundred dollar machine from Tractor Supply and that was COVID money before Dan, I think, Nick or Buck.
Yeah.
Yeah, COVID, COVID money, right, exactly. And, and obviously it failed. I was a hard no until Brad found the thirty thousand, so I may, I may vote for it. But, uh, beside other uses, they're going to use it to, to groom the, the field, to get more life out of that field, the artificial field down there, so.
What's going to happen with the, what's going to happen with the tractor with all the problems?
The UTV, it would, probably, I don't know if we could sell it to like some.
Marketplace or something.
Somebody that wants it for cheap, but it was a six thousand nine hundred ninety nine thousand dollar machine, nine hundred ninety nine, yeah.
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars. It wasn't the best machine when it was purchased and it's been more of a pain than I think it needs to be. And I just think they just need a, a meteor machine that will be able to get year round usage versus what it's currently being used for.
I see it's from turf products. Is it a Toro?
It is a Toro. It's a Workman UTX gas, two seater.
Workman by Toro.
And it's on Sourcewell contract. That's what it is.
Yeah.
Was the first one purchased new?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it was purchased.
And is there any kind of warranty on it or is there like an eleven law for these things?
I don't think so. No, it, it, you, it gets very questionable reviews online also. It's, it's, it's a part issue. It's a huge part issue. Like, we can't bring it to, to Bethel Power because they can't get the parts to fix or to design.
It's an off-brand unit, it's made in China, so parts are not available.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's no option to take it back to Tractor Supply and say this thing is junk?
No. But we could try to sell it to, it might work for, you know, some kids in the backyard or a farmer that, but it's just not usable for our purposes.
But in essence, it seems like they bought a residential model that's supposed to be used like a couple of times a month and tried to run it like a facilities machine.
Right. Cynthia, is there anything you'd like to add on it?
Well, that's what, that's the sole purpose is to fluff up the turf.
No.
Is that what it's, but it was, what does it do?
Uh, so, so it'll be multi, it'll be multi-use, Cynthia, that, uh, when we, when we have part timers, our part timers use it to get into the school system. We use it to, because it has the electric bed, it will move clay from whether it's at our shop to other fields to help with the fields. It will help groom. It'll go into our disc golf area or the back trail in the school system so that our guys can carry chainsaws and their weed whackers because, you know, the trucks won't go back there. So it's just. Get our staff around in a more efficient way in a, in a narrower spot. And we'll, it will only go thirty five miles per hour also. We won't get the forty five mile an hour option.
Now, so he'd be racing through.
Yes, so. So I believe that department does a lot of work in the town and, and I'm in support of buying the equipment that they need to. My rub or my problem is that the Board of Finance has a certain amount of money and we have to foresee how we're going to spend that money. This item wasn't on a capital plan, you know, but, but the problem is their departments get in line for equipment they need to do the same thing you're trying to do. And we just need to be able to have a long look out at exactly what the town needs to spend so we can make rational decisions to make sure we have enough for all departments, right? That doesn't mean I'm not supporting this, this motion tonight, but I think it's important that the department just don't come and run in, you know, last month it was the fire department that didn't foresee they needed twenty two thousand dollars of radio, right? So, you know, they all need it, but our job is to figure out how to pay for it and we need to have a vision of, of where the ask comes from.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and, you know, going on that, John, and, and I knew that was going to be a topic tonight, but there was a piece of equipment using it and it just premature wore out. So I understand why.
And that's why I'm going to support it. But, you know, somehow somebody that knows how to turn wrenches needs to know that we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck because it's not going to last three more years or a piece of equipment, you know, side by side or whatever they're calling it, to do what they do.
Yeah, I get it.
Uh, Nick?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, it was that John that was speaking?
Yeah, that John over in the corner.
Because he's very tiny in my screen. I, I am with John as far as, because I mentioned it to you that we, we just, I mean, maybe it's a process, but we have to really start kind of folding these things in earlier, like, oh, we're going to need this because, you know, it, it's not a, a complete ambush, but, you know, it's a little bit of a surprise, so. You know, just going forward, we just have to get, get a bead on what, what we need going forward sooner.
I read her the riot act really well last week.
Oh, okay, good. You know, because that's not my, that's your thing. That's what you do.
Yeah, from, from, you know, from my perspective with my department head, she's doing a bang up job on this. This is something that we totally had no idea was coming. It was, you know, when they purchased this, it sounded like it was going to work and that's what we were doing. Was really before my time, right? I don't know if this came through the Board of Finance when I was here or this was just Arpa, right?
It's just Arpa. So the first machine was Arpa with.
I think the issue is that I, I understand where you're all coming from, but just keep this one right. This one was, you know, something that broke didn't have the lifespan we thought it was. So I will make sure that with all the department heads, you know, anything that's coming up that we know about, we'll let you know. We, we really talked about this for a while, trying to do everything we could to make it work. Can we find somebody to work on it? You know, it's become like a little Frankenstein is what it sounds like. And go with. So I just want to make sure for the record that, you know, you're raising a really top notch job, trying to, you know, love this thing along and get it running and it just wouldn't work out.
What's the lifespan of these? You might know, Nick.
You know, it, it's not the years. I mean, they have a couple of mowers and we talked about them last month. You have a, a ten year old mower with seventeen hundred hours, but a six year old mower with twenty two hundred dollars. So it's the hours, you know, so.
Like I was trying to wrap my head around it the other day that in essence, we spent thirty five hundred bucks per year for it. Then I'm looking at a thirty thousand dollar machine that I hope we get at least ten years out of. And then I go, oh, so when that, if just stupid, like, straight line, go, all right, so we kind of got in theory three grand out of the year out of it. And hopefully we get, hopefully this next one lasts fifteen, twenty, but.
And again, a Toro's a better machine and, and I'm buying onto it, but it's all about the hours. We mow it with mowers in our own business with four thousand hours. That's unheard of. It's all hey, take care of it, you know?
Right. Yeah, I think it was a piece of junk.
Yeah.
It was junk when it started. I liked Karen's thought that we should just drop it off at their place and say it's junk.
Well, it's on credit card. Can we, can we take back the credit card? Someone like to make a motion on that?
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation from the board of selectmen to spend thirty thousand two hundred and sixty, not to exceed thirty thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars and four cents and get it from our CNR account to purchase the Workman UTX.
I second, I second that.
Cynthia, a second to any other discussion on that? I think it was a good discussion, but I'm sure everybody's mind all in favor. Singing a saying aye? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, we're up to Brad's control room.
All right. So before I get into the financials that are attached, the assessor gave myself, and then I passed it along to the first selectman, and I know I talked to you and you guys were about it, Nick. Yep. The grand list needs to be finalized by the end of January. The assessor finalized it either yesterday or today, but she gave me the numbers yesterday. So I just want to give the boards going into the budget season where we're at for the grand list. So I'll give you the bottom line. The bottom line is based on our current mill rate. We were down ninety two thousand three hundred and forty four dollars. Why we're down is motor vehicles is down eight hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, which some people are aware, some aren't. The state in all their infinite wisdom changed the way motor vehicles are valued. So it should be valued on, I think it's J D Edwards market value for an eight year old car, depending on what kind of car it was, what the value was. Now it's, the state came up with an appreciation schedule off of MSRP. So now it's, everything's straight lined. I think, I don't remember all the percentages, but I think the first year drops fifteen and then five a year until whatever. So in all that shuffling, it shuffled the values of the cars in town.
That's the eight hundred thousand and at the end of the day, we lost ninety two thousand in revenue.
Yes, because real estate and personal property are up seven hundred thousand. So the real estate and personal property grew what we kind of expected to. It's been growing seven hundred thousand to a million in non-reval years. So that part did its work. The other piece of this, uh, there's a change in the laws of the veterans exemptions. So locally, the veteran exemptions increased by eighty eight thousand dollars. So in essence, what we're down is the veterans exemption. The, the real estate growth and personal property kind of matched the cars, but then the exemption came in and hit it. So.
Yeah, but on most budget seasons, we look at a windfall of revenue and now we don't have that.
But the cars wiped out the, the, the.
I know, last year we gained.
Oh, yeah.
A million.
And now, and we gained seven hundred, but we, we lost it because the car value. Everybody's going to get eighty bucks off their cars, I mean.
That's a great, that's a really interesting point. Do we know how much the state's methodology change cost us? Just the methodology change?
I don't have that piece at all. When Izzy was trying to run it initially, she thought the number was, depending on how she ran it, was going to be between five hundred and eight hundred. So some of it is the methodology, the methodology change is carrying a lot of the water. But when I'm pulling up now, and I should have added it up earlier, is what the grand list has done for the last four years. So just looking at cars, so twenty twenty, these are all budget years. So twenty twenty three cars were up one point five million dollars. One hundred percent COVID increased the price of used cars. The next year, cars were up another five ninety, so six hundred thousand. So between those two years, cars went up two point one million dollars. Last year, cars were down two fifty seven. That was just great value of stuff starting to label, uh, level off post-COVID.
That's a calculation.
And now we're down another, the eight twenty eight. So in essence, we went up two point one million from COVID increasing the value of cars. We were coming back down post-COVID. Last year was two fifty seven. Mixed in with the number this year, well, we don't know what it would have done if they didn't change the value, but my guess is it would have dropped again because drops, values of used cars are dropping. Would it have dropped eight twenty eight? Probably not, but it would have dropped at least the two fifty, I'm sure it probably would have. Because if you see, like, you can go out and buy a car now. Lots are starting to fill up a little bit more, whereas you couldn't, and that's what drove up the value of used cars. It just, what's frustrating is because of a decision that the state made, it's another year that somebody can't just look at the mill rate and the percentage of the mill rate and go, my taxes are going up that percentage.
All right, because that math is in there, yeah.
Well, that was kind of where I was at. Right here, here we had, I remember seeing articles and papers about what great work the state reps for us.
Yeah.
Knowing that that was going to come back and.
You got to pay for someone.
Exactly. Haunt the people through our local taxes.
Yep. So the only thing this does to the benefit of like residential is it's going to drive the mill rate up some, but it's going to drive the mill rate up for businesses as well. So, but how much, you know, like it's eight hundred thousand is like a third of a mil.
It almost doesn't matter.
Off there, right, starting there, right.
Yeah. But the calculation changed. It is what it is, so it, there's no other way. We can't go back and say we don't like it.
Yeah, it's the hand that we're dealt with. But to John's point, we have been, become accustomed to having a billion dollars a year additional revenue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and last year, the growth was five fifty three because the real estate and personal property were up eight eleven, cars were down two fifty seven.
I didn't realize last year it was down a little bit on motor vehicles.
Yeah, because cars flipped.
It would have been even, it ate, ate at that eight hundred.
And then twenty four is a mess because it was a revale year. Real estate and personal property were up nineteen million. Yeah, but because obviously the building dropped.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks for that. Bob, you want to say?
I like it back there.
Yeah. And so then twenty three, real estate and personal property were up eight hundred thousand. So twenty six for that field, it's a little light by like sixty grand, but it's been in that eight hundred thousand range and now it's seven thirty five. It just, now the cars just totally wiped out all the growth. Actually, if you add back the eighty eight for the exemptions, we're right back up in that eight thirteen range.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So you said personal property went down by sixty grand last, this current?
No, personal property is in with real estate. So when Izzy does it, she breaks it out, real estate and personal property and motor vehicle. Personal property grew. So here's percentage differences because she gives that to me. Real estate's up point nine seven, but it's all additions and new construction because there's not a revale. Personal property went up one point three percent. Motor vehicle's down twelve point six nine.
That's how it washes up.
Yeah. And it's not just the values of cars because then they changed the rule about trailers. Commercial vehicles are valued differently. So.
One of the commercial vehicles, my understanding is hoping to pick that up on the personal property test, right?
I think so, yeah.
We don't know.
Well, but anything that's registered is under motor vehicle, so.
Yeah.
So you caught it, a trailer, anything that has a plate on it.
Right. But, but the, the trucks, I don't think are going to come onto that, really. My understanding is trucks are going to, like, the commercial vehicles, like trucks, you know, has a plate on it, it's going to come on the personal property now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, not, not under.
Like a loader.
Like, like your business property, not your.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I'm misspeaking. Business property. So those are, those are off the grand list where we normally see them.
Yeah.
The question is, will they get picked off? That's a big question. Is that, will they actually make it onto the, the business property?
Yes. Brad, you have a sense for when these numbers will be? I'll say fail now, but you know, as as tight as we.
They're tight. Izzy's done.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, for certain reasons, she had to be done.
For your part.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, one more time.
Yeah. Slow with So real estate and personal property, which is the base, uh, so the net is ninety-two thousand, three forty-four down.
Down.
Of that, I don't have the exact number of it. She sent it to me, but I wrote the rough number, eighty-eight is related to the vets exemption. So all that ninety-two down, eighty-eight down is the exemption.
So the auto methodology is ninety-two down less.
Yeah, like the difference between just the motor vehicle and real estate without the exemption would have been like four grand.
Thank you.
Let's go to the rest of your report there, Brad.
All right, um, revenue for the year, we're at fifty-seven percent and we're halfway through the year. So that's trending good. Uh, the collection rate is half a percent off of the prior month, but that jumps around. Last month it was up half a percent. So that's some of that's just timing of when collections are. Um, the interests were at one point three million, one point three five, we budgeted six fifty. Um, I haven't done the transfer of the five hundred thousand from P S F. So that would have put us higher. It's just a account, a journal entry that I have to do at some point. Um, so revenue wise, everything's looking really well. Good, well, I don't know.
Brad, do you anticipate that the one point three million growing at the current rate or are interest rates already caught that?
It slowed down, so we were getting about two hundred thousand a month. Uh, this last month was like one eighty.
So you think you you could see a hundred and fifty for the next six months?
So it's six months ago, yeah, we should, we should easily, we'll easily clear another six hundred. Um, the wild card is, I know, uh, in six days, we have a new president sworn in. And then I think the new president wants that number to drop fast. I think the Fed's going to do what the Fed wants to do, but obviously there'll be pressure there. Um, so it's just something to watch is, is there going to be enough pressure that the Fed moves quicker than they want? Because the Fed's talking about going real slow.
But it takes a couple quarters to get that thing moving, so.
Yeah. Um, but they did a fifty and then they did a twenty-five. Um, so they don't seem to be in a big rush to get it. If they were in a rush to get it lower, they would have done since since they started with the fifty, they would have gone with another fifty at least because that's, nobody's going to jump up and down at that. Uh, but then they slowed down at the four-five, so it's, it's interesting. I don't think they, have they done another one since then? Um, so.
So the number of six fifty, that was a real, I mean, did you, did you know we were going to overshoot that six fifty? And you were just being conservative because if you take the six fifty, the one, three and take six fifty out, I mean, we're talking almost another million a million dollar revenue that's gonna, you know, how did we pick the six fifty going into last year's budget?
It was conservative, like year before, so in twenty twenty-four, we did roughly two million dollars of interest. And the year before, interest was like four hundred thousand before we adjusted it when we adjusted Park and Rad. I was pretty sure we were going to blow past the six fifty, but we have no real control over it. The worst thing I could have done is jumped to a million and then come in at six fifty.
But it seems like a line item that could really make up for departments that maybe went over a little bit.
Well, you can't because it's revenue versus expenses, but
Oh, but it
falls out to fund out, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't have any concerns about revenue for the year because
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just, it just pops out of the page on the
Yeah, but and it's hard because in, hopefully in three months, this board's setting a mill rate that'll have a revenue calculation for interest. Even if we're anticipating doing one point seven, I'm not going to jump to one point seven for revenue for interest. When we get closer and seen what the Fed's done in the meanwhile, will I go, will I recommend six fifty? Will I recommend eight? It, it's, it's no point putting a number out there for me yet because there's more data points to come in.
Yeah.
They don't do anything.
Yep.
Um, so, well, like, on the topic of revenue, the we know we're short in, uh, the equal cost sharing, E C S, that we get. We budgeted eight million, eight eighty-one because that was supposed to be the number. And then the budget came out two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less when the state finalized their budget. So we know, obviously, the interest is more than made that up already.
And then our energy cost, I mean, we have numbers.
Yeah. So right now, the state's talking about the early projections are E C S being ten million next year. It sounds amazing. And I had a conversation with Dr. Carver about it. She goes, what are you going to budget? I go, if I have to decide right now, probably eight point eight. Uh, but we did look back. What we ended up getting, even though everybody swore the number was going to be higher than what the governor said, we got exactly what the governor said. So again, a data point for me is going to be in early February, the governor's going to release his budget. Which will have a revenue projection for E C S for us. If he's got the ten, I'd still be a little leery of the state to jump to the ten. But I'd feel a lot more comfortable moving up for my eight-eight. If he's at eight-six, which we're currently at, I don't see how I can move. I don't even know how how I can keep eight-eight. You know, like, and then she goes, well, what if you end up getting ten? I was like, great. What if I budget ten? And it comes in at nine, we're going to have another year that we had a year in the past where E C S got cut by a million dollars after the budget was set.
Right, we didn't know how we were going.
Um, which Bob probably remembers all too well. Um, and the board of ed came up with eight hundred thousand of that. So he said, Christine, if we did that and there's a you have eight hundred thousand that you're going to be able to give us? She said, no, I'd have to lay a bunch of people off. I said, well, isn't it better to be kind of forthcoming with the public and be a little conservative on our revenue? And if it comes in higher, great. But not create this hole that could cost you. You know, like, it's, I know what you're, it's a hard balancing act. I don't want to overtax people. But I also don't want to have like a panic and promise that we're going to be able to do a million dollars in roads and then going like it come July going, well, we can only do five hundred thousand dollars a road because we got to make up a million dollars.
Right.
You know, we, there's a, it wouldn't just be roads, like with the utilities this year, we know it's a problem. Um, we've had conversations about where that comes from. Some of it is maybe we don't fund C N R the whole million because we can't exceed our expense budget. Um, is one of the reasons that we moved the sale of the properties at the last solo board of finance meeting, we moved a million dollars in C N R. Hopefully, we get to put the whole million that we budgeted this year on top of that.
Yep.
But it's an unknown. So, um, because the last thing anybody wants to do is have to go back to the public and say we need to do a supplemental tax bill because the state cut us a million bucks, right? Even though everybody will blame the state, it's their fault, but it's still going to be our fault that
We're still taxing money.
So.
Put that in the newsletter, see how that goes.
You can't put a big palm palm on that.
Um, so switching to the revenue side, um, Dan and I have started doing all of our department head meetings with talking about, uh, we're talking about two things, where they are compared to the budget for the first six months and their budget requests. Um, we've done six or seven, um, of those, so we're looking at that. Um, so far, the only concern I have is utilities. It's the same thing we've been talking about all along. If you look at the sheet here, utilities doesn't look bad yet, but we're just now into the heating season. Um, and some of this rate hike stuff with a five cents per kilowatt for delivery came in kind of after we were done cooling, doing some of the cooling for the schools. So the worst has yet to come for utilities. Um, to that end, I haven't built out the utility budget for twenty-six yet. Um, in part, it's, I don't have any hair, but I would lose a lot of hair trying to do it, but it's I'm trying to get more bills in at the new rates.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and as we've talked about before, the other wild card is December one of twenty-five, our current supply contract date. So we're locked in at, I think, eight cent, eight point one three kil- cents per kilowatt. Um, and we've been locked in for that for five years. Um, right, the last, we got an estimate, but it didn't have everything. It's going to start, it's going to be ten something when we go out and do it, because we'll go out and lock in, you can only lock in up to five years at a time. So when we locked in last time, we were towards the end of the contract, but there wasn't as much volatility in it. Thank God, somebody did that. Um, because when everything jumped to like thirteen for a while, we were paying eight. We've been, when everything's ten, now we're paying eight. But that good time ends, December one twenty-five. We're going to try to time the market right and come in and try to get as low as number as possible, but we need to do it. Um, we did lock in, I talked to Nick about this, uh, for the twenty-six budget, we did lock in gas and diesel. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Dan and I did that, um, because the rates were good. Uh, I can tell you in a second what that, it was like sixty thousand dollars in savings. Or we may get twenty more.
If I could add something, um, one of the things he hasn't covered yet is the fact that we don't know what's going to happen this spring with the delivery charges that were put on. The delivery charging that were put on this past year were for, uh, the Milsim nuclear plant to keep it going, right? So we had a purchase power agreement, which was more money. We had, um, paying, or actually should say, allowing ever source to recoup charges that, you know, for people who didn't pay during COVID. And the last one was eighty million dollars of, uh, E V charging infrastructure, right? All of that is supposed to come off in a ten-month period. Uh, well, the first things at least. So sometime over the spring, if they don't add on, like, it is possible because of, you know, the gubernatorial race next year, that maybe they don't add those things on. They give people a break and they, Purit comes in and says, we're not adding, and the legislation doesn't add, and we're on again. And those come down, that coupled with the July decrease, which is normally every July, we might have a good chance to lock in next summer. That's something better.
Would be a good time to
Like, I'm really hoping, I'm hoping that, like, there's going to be this little dip and that's when we can just jump on it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't know what's going to happen. You know, historically, they may just keep that going, like gravy train. But with a, with a gubernatorial election coming next year.
Would be the pressure.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah, so our locked-in prices, after we locked in, it's fifty to sixty thousand dollars in savings. So even though we didn't need to lock that in yet, we did because we jumped on a price and we're going to try to do the same.
This is for fuel, right?
Yeah, this is gas and diesel, yeah. Um, the other piece of it, which nobody's really talking about yet because they don't see it. The state announced three months ago that the natural gas is going up, I think the delivery fee.
Yeah.
Um, per firm by, I think like five percent or whatever it is. Yeah, I think it starts in November. So.
So Brad, how are you going to carry a number for utilities for electric with that public benefit? If we don't know it's going to come off in May.
Yeah.
In my own, we have a magic eight ball.
So you do have a plan.
So the short answer is, I believe, and this is why another, I've been kicking around in my head, how to handle it. I think I need the budget that the state's going to go, people are used to paying that five cents, additional five cents per kilowatt and just find a way to repurpose it and hope for the best.
So you're going to carry it.
I think we have to carry it, but I think they meet, Pura said it in April last year.
Yeah.
So.
That's pretty far down our road.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why I think we need to carry it, or it's going to be a conversation with this board. Do we carry half of it and go, understand that we might have a two or three hundred thousand dollar problem if the state keeps their upset? And how do we handle that?
The eight ball.
The eight ball.
Well, and I'll put more political consideration in the governor's speech to the joint session at the opening of last week. Electric rates are one of the big things. Again, I mean, if we
People are getting killed.
People are getting killed and they understand it. Uh, I don't know how much of this is just like, oh, you know, we're going to do more nuclear, you know, I don't know.
That takes time too.
But he's also said, you know, he's willing to do big things. You know, some of the things that we've said that are small, he looks at it small, like right now, we have three, we have a three board member, Pura, he gets, he gets one five. His one person is kind of getting killed on Pura. So he good, but he says, oh, that's just, you know, small potatoes. Cosmetic, he said. So there's an appetite, they want to do more.
Yeah, but the problem, but we won't know. The problem could be, they could justify keeping the five cents per kilowatt hour because they're going to do more.
Yeah.
And go, this is going to save us down the road.
We'll watch, we'll watch.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to watch it. The problem is, hopefully, we're done before the state's done, because hopefully that means their budget passed on the first time. Yeah. Um, and we're supposed to get, uh, the latest update from the state on the health insurance, uh, next week. Right now, they're still, they're talking eight to ten with the one percent adjustment from Fairfield County. Obviously, the hope is they come down. It's not going to be drastic, but every percentage, I think, is like thirty grand. So if the next update is six to eight with the one percent, we'll come down fifty, sixty grand in health insurance.
Could you explain what the eight to ten plus one percent for Fairfield County means?
So the state, so the, all the health, all the employees for the town are on the state health plan. Uh, it's called the Connecticut Partnership Plan. So every year, the state comes out and tells you what the increase is.
And is that the eight to ten that you're
So right now, their projection is it's going to go up, the cost of it's going to go up eight to ten percent. The other thing that they love to do is do adjustments for counties. Uh, Fairfield County is going up two percent. Irregardless of the other piece, or that's not
Additional.
Yeah, additional to the, but they were not phasing it in over two years.
So the state overall is eight to ten, but Fairfield County is going to get two more.
Yeah.
But but Handem, Wyndham or something might get one or whatever.
Wyndham's a good one. Wyndham's down six percent because the county adjustment is down six.
You're kidding.
Maybe we could annex ourselves for at least health insurance purposes.
Is it really?
You know, you know that it's a Ponzi scheme, right? You know it's a Ponzi scheme, Connecticut partnership.
And if you haven't noticed, Cynthia's title tonight is Major Sinning.
I can't get rid of it. That's my, that's my online persona that I signed in with Google. I can't get rid of it. I know, sin, you know, get it, sin, Cynthia.
So, but one of the conversations that, because the board events having huge increases in their health insurance, they might switch back to the partnership plan because even though they saved a bunch by switching off, they might have jumped past it. And might be looking to switch back, even with the state partnership, talk about eight to ten. That's how huge of increases they've had on their
She's real nervous about that.
So those numbers are going to start coming in next week?
So the new state update, they do webinars, they do two of them, once, I think, the twenty-first and once the twenty-fourth. I'm signed up, I think, for the twenty-fourth, we have budget meetings. But I get a little antsy, so if I remember, I might just fire off an email and go, what was the increase? Um, that one, the board of ed went out to bid for the health insurance. Those bids back are due back, I think, February eighteenth. So it's why our budget schedules a little bit later. They wanted to get those bids in before they presented to this the board of selectmen, board of finance. So their, their present, presentation night is the twenty-fifth. So they wanted to get those numbers in, they got to bring it to their board and then have time to put together the paperwork to come back to this board. We'll have preliminary numbers that have the higher number in it before then, but they don't want to come in with one number and then like two days after their present go, oh, it's different. So, but they're out to bid now. So.
Great.
Um, yeah, I talked about utilities is really my only concern. Um, we do project that health insurance for twenty-five because I'm looking at projections too. Uh, it's going to be good to the good by a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand this year. Um, and we know that by refinancing their debt, we save two hundred thousand dollars this year. So two goods in the twenty-five budget, I'll always go on the low end, is probably three hundred thousand, that'll make up some of the utility overage, and we'll see what else comes into the game. We have some open positions. Um, some we need to fill sooner than others and others were not in a rush, but we don't run a lot of excess staff, any excess staff, really. We just, so we've been telling people, hold off, hold off, hold off. Some of it with some of the physicians is trying to find the right person and not just hire anybody. Um, so that's helping salary and a vacant position doesn't have health insurance. So that's kind of driving both of those. Uh, so we're doing what we can to mitigate it without also going well, we're not going to pay as much, you know, if we don't get much more snow, there'll be safety there. We could get ten more storms and have an overage there, so it's.
Brad, on, on, on the snow, the, the school system, they budget their money on their, on their, on their On their, on their, on their four fifty account, right? So if it didn't snow, they didn't spend any of that.
So the, the school plowing's in the highway department budget.
Oh, it's, that snow plowing's in the highway department?
Yes, the part that's in their budget is the landscaping in the summer.
Right.
The snow removals in, under uh, contracted snow. In the town budget.
So we hire the, the contractor that does the snow removal up there.
Correct, yeah, because.
And that's high, and that's highway?
Yes.
So we recognize the savings by not spending the money, where if it was in the four sixty, it's already allocated.
Four fifty.
Yeah.
Four sixty.
Sixty, yeah.
Um, but yeah, so that. A good year, not much, if it doesn't snow anymore this year or ice, we don't want ice either. But we've had two really good years for that, and so like, at some point, that coin's gonna flip, I just hope it's not this year.
Yeah, I got it.
For better or worse, the school contract isn't a set dollar amount. Right, so when we have a good year, we have a good year, when we have a bad year, we have a bad year. I don't think anybody would do a project that size on a contract, well. They would do it on a contract, it's not a contract we've got signed. Yeah.
It's based on if they get paid per push.
Yeah, it's not a like.
They're being paid per plot.
Per plot, yeah, 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 it's not, it's not a contract. Um, so that's kind of it for.
Let's care before we move on.
Yes, sir.
I, I did notice uh, when they did the. Report on the tax program in the back of the statute that was provided. Under the annual review, there's supposed to be a report. Sent to the board, uh, from the Board of Finance to the Board of Selectmen and the office of the town clerk. And it's actually reported, you guys have to vote to send the report? Is. You basically heard what they have given you. Um, and then there was no vote taken, right, that was the uh.
They didn't need an action there, right?
Right, but if you're saying, if you're required to send a report at some time to the Board of Selectmen. And the town clerk, it probably requires something, I don't know what's been done in the past years.
Can we review that during a month and add that to agenda, Mary? Can you make a note on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess so.
Just for the wording?
Yeah, it was supposed to be November thirtieth each year, but we noticed it's away. But yeah, if you would do.
Just for the word, you know what I mean?
Do you remember?
I don't remember sending, sending a letter, I remember voting here to approve the allocation.
So do you think that'd be enough to, to? Vote on the, well, because they gave us no real, well, I'm sorry, they gave us real numbers, but.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I heard John say that it no longer needs a vote.
Because we're following state.
Numbers not.
Well, that's the actual number, but it's supposed to be an annual review. Um, of the number of persons that apply, right? And then if there's anything in the town ordinance that needs to be changed, you're supposed to comment on that to the Board of Selectmen and the town clerk. So, certainly next meeting.
Can we get ready?
I wanted to call attention to it, because I noticed it as in the back. I've not done this very long either.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we could just look into this in this, you know, before we come up with the next agenda.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Does someone wanna make a motion on Brad's uh, report, Comptroller's report?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the comptroller report as presented.
All right, we'll, we'll second it, uh, try everybody's mind, all in favor, so you wanna stand aye? Thank you, Brad, thank you, sir. Um, I would take, accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And we have a second, I'm sure. Or a Bob, thanks, Bob, all in favor? I'm gonna pick on Karen next meeting, so. All right, Cynthia, thank you for getting that.